We are having a special Board of Selectmen meeting. Today is Thursday, November 12th, 2020. We're commencing at 6:30, 2 P.M. This meeting has a very short agenda, but a lot to discuss, which we will get into shortly. But before we do, I need to say that in response to Governor Baker's Declaration of Public Health, emergency and related executive orders, the Town of Situate Public Meeting shall be held remotely until further notice. This meeting is being recorded. You can view it live on Situate Community Television Facebook Live. And if you would like to join us, the Zoom link is on the agenda on the town website. So I would like to have a motion to accept the agenda, please.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Conley, seconded by Ms. Curran. As we are all working remotely, all votes have to be taken by roll call. So Ms. Devon.
Ms. Canfield.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Curran.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
All right, the motion is moved, is accepted, 5-0. It is not a traditional meeting, but we do have Zoom and walk-ins on the agenda. So if you are in the, if you are a participant in this meeting and wish to address the board, go to the participant icon on the bottom of your screen and raise hands, and we would be happy to acknowledge you. Okay, I see none. I didn't expect it because we're not in a normal meeting here. We, the next item is report the town administrator. But because surprisingly, Mr. Bedrow is not able to be in two places at the same time. He is attending, as we speak, the Planning Board meeting discussion about site-related work on the senior center. He will complete that work and then join us. So we will postpone a report of the town administrator at this time because he's not here, which will bring us to the first item on our agenda, which we snuck in here because I don't think it will take a lot of conversation. And that is, I'm trying to find it online, is a discussion of the special permit event fee. Every time we have somebody come in with a special event and they say, "We'd like to waive the fee," we all wring our hands because it's sort of been arbitrary of when we say yes and when we say no. So Lorraine was nice enough to put together a list of those we have waived and those we have not, and...
Actually, Allison did that.
Thank you, Allison, and thank you, Lorraine. Her team put it together. And we would like to just have a quick conversation so that we have, we're all on the same page and maybe establish criteria that we think is appropriate for when a fee should be waived. So I'd ask the board to refer to the backup material. Right now, we charge a special application fee of $100. It's typically for large events, for-profit events, or events that are not originating in Situate. And then I think the only caveat else would be just a big event that requires a lot of resources. We have not charged for the opposite of that, obviously. So I will put it to the board if you would like to opine on if you think, A, there's a certain criteria we should set, and B, if you think the fee structure is appropriate. Does anyone want to kick this off?
I just want to look at it for a moment.
Okay. I'm looking at Mr. Vignani, who always has something to say on the subject.
Well, I can give a little history on it. We added this, and Lorraine can probably fact-check me. We added this probably, I don't know, six years or so ago. And it's legal, and most towns do it, and just as a fee to be associated with just the internal administrative stuff to do an event. Initially, we waived it for very, very few events. It was mostly for the bigger, all-town-inclusive things like like the carnival and like the St. Patrick's Day Parade and like Halloween, those types of things. And now it's just getting to the point where we're waiving it for everybody. So my opinion would be, let's pick a number that we're all comfortable with and don't waive it for anybody. And get kind of the subjectiveness out of it and get it so that it's really not negotiable, but it's not overbearing for all these great charity events that are coming before us. It just gets to be too, you know, once you waive it for one, you feel bad if you don't waive it for others. And it's just kind of defeating the purpose. Or get rid of it altogether. But right now, it's too harky-jerky in terms of who gets charged, who didn't get charged, who got charged last year, who didn't get charged last year. And let's just pick a number. If we all agree, can agree upon a number and just make it that we don't waive it for anybody. Would be my two cents.
Anyone else like to add to that? Or have a different?
Yeah, I guess, Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
I think the only problem I have with that, Tony, is that some events are run by very small organizations without a lot of wherewithal, and some of them are run by, you know, somewhat more well-financed or bigger organizations. So I actually have a problem with there being a flat fee. It's kind of like, you know, if we could have some sort of sliding fee. But on the other hand, I also think, how much do we actually take in each year in this particular line item? And if it's not, if it's not big, I would just as soon get rid of it. So... Lorraine, do we know?
No.
Well, we listed all of the people that we charged. It's $100 each, so one, two, three, four, five. So about $1,200. We typically charge... We typically do not charge the local nonprofits and things that benefit the community, as you can see from the list. Anybody that turns a profit or is a much bigger scale. I mean, a lot of work goes into these special events.
Right.
All the departments, lots of phone calls, lots of work in the office.
Right.
Try to recoup some of that.
But they all don't cause the same amount of work, I assume.
If you take that, oh, Madam Chair, may I say something?
May I? Yes, Ms. Curran.
I was just listening to Lorraine and Tony and Karen. If you take that all together, you know, we're collecting $1,200 a year, yet the costs below probably exceed that. Most of these folks are already paying their own detail, right? So that's not included in the 100.
Yeah, this does not include DPW or police details at all. Right.
But you're right, like, you charge the Horribles Parade 50 bucks and you charge, you know, the St. Patrick's Day Parade 50 bucks. That's not equitable.
Right.
Completely different issues, scenarios.
I'm sorry, Mara, I didn't catch those two. The Horribles and what other one?
Oh, again, if you compare it, if you compare it to charging the St. Patrick's Day Parade...
Well, St. Patrick's Day is significantly more complicated than the Horribles.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Yep.
All right, Mr. Goodrich, you were patiently waiting, did you?
Yeah, no, I mean, I agree. I mean, having some of that, if you had Saint Mary's, you know, Sisters of the Poor wants to hold a vigil, you know, it's, you know, to me, it's a little tough to try and charge them $100 versus, right, some for-profit. I think there's some line between a for-profit, out-of-town versus a an in-town nonprofit or even some, you know. So even if you add it all these together, let's say there's 50, you're talking 5,000 a year. You know, and part of the question too is, you know, are these, are these beneficial? Do we want more or do we not want more of these sorts of events, right? I mean, you could really encourage or discourage based on just a fee structure. So I think that's just something to bring into light. So, I mean, I would be fine with either reducing it or having some line of delineation of, you know, really clear in, you know, in-town versus out-of-town nonprofit or something like, I don't know. But those are my thoughts.
Okay, the other factor, and I'll look to Tony and Mara, I think, to clarify this, but I believe this was implemented before we started charging DPW and, well, police detail always had to be paid. But it's been since I've been around that we, you know, if somebody needs sawhorses and any garbage pails or all of that, they have to pay extra for that now. I don't believe that was the case when this fee was in place. Is that accurate?
I don't think so. I think the fee has nothing to do with any expense other than the administrative staff in-town hall to get the event done. So...
Well, then if that's it, then it should be pretty standard, I would imagine, because like...
Well, like Lorraine said, if it's the run for Situate, then you got to make more phone calls and you got to... It, I don't think this fee is going to make or break an event happening in town. I think that there's none that I see that are for-profit. You know, they all have some sort of charity-based, or most of them anyways, event, whether it's a Town of Situate charity or out-of-town charity.
A lot of the races or fundraisers are not fundraisers. They're really for profit, honestly.
Yeah.
For profit for the guy that's running it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought most of them went to two or three different charities or whatever.
Some of the money goes to a charity, but not all the money.
So my feeling on this is you either, we either come up with, and I wouldn't want it to be complicated, you know, a two-tiered structure, like, just like we do with the athletic fields. You're from out-of-town, if you're making a profit, you know, the obvious things, that they pay a high fee, whatever the fee is. And then, and then everyone else either pays a lower fee or no fee. I mean, I, that's kind of, I don't, I want to make it, I agree with Tony. We want to make it simple and non-arbitrary. What do you guys, how do you think that could work? Or do you want to just, I mean, Tony suggested, lower fee, everyone pays it, we don't talk about it. Or do we try to do a bifurcated structure? Feelings? Karen?
Yeah, I would feel badly charging the Little Sisters of the Poor, as Andrew points out, anything. I felt, I would feel badly charging the people who did the chalk walk a fee. And then you get into the semantics of, is it a special event? Is it not a special event? What is, what is the chalk walk? You know, I just, that's, that's my, that's my issue. I just don't think it's fair for some really small, little grassroots organizations to get charged. And I actually did have a problem with the fact that we did not charge the special event fee to the people running the movie night at St. George's because of the pandemic. And they were being run by what I believe is a for-profit event planning organization, which is fine, I have no problem with that. But I think in that case, we should have charged them. But then it all came, "Oh, with the pandemic, we're not going to charge them." So it just seems like people apply for the waiver, and then we're forced to sit here and talk about the merits of whether to give them the waiver or not.
Well, the other thing is, the only things that go to the board are new events. For example, the Easter egg hunt comes before us every year. You don't see that.
And do we, do we charge them?
We don't charge any community-based. The list here are all community-based. Halloween in the Harbor, Easter egg hunt, Ship Shape Day, Firefighter Road Race, Best Buddies.
Well, we can't, we can't charge for Ship Shape Day. They go out and pick up the trash boards.
Well, I'm just, that's what I'm just saying. These are all, these are all community-based events that we've never charged for.
Well, Ship Shape Day also is a town-run event.
Town-run event, yeah. So, so we have the list where we have charged. I think they're pretty obvious why they're on there. Do we want to try to define what their commonalities are and only charge that type of group?
We tried to do that in a recommendation at the bottom of the page for you as a base.
All right, let's see what they...
Here to work from.
So the recommended, the suggestions were events that are community-based and not for-profit should be considered a no-charge event. Large-scale events, nonprofit fundraisers to benefit outside the community, and for-profit events should be charged $100.
What's the definition of a large-scale event?
St. Patrick's Day Parade, Ohasa Triathlon, the MS Cape Cod Getaway Race, 3B Half Marathon.
Yeah, yeah.
I think if it's...
Over 100 people.
Well, we have a lot, over 100 people at the Easter egg hunt.
Yeah, but I think...
They don't have children.
Yeah, but not benefiting outside community eliminates that in the definition.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know, you could take a look at this. Why is the Knights of Columbus Carnival on not and the St. Patrick's Day Parade is?
Yeah, I honestly think the same, KFC falls in within that definition. It's a large-scale event, for sure.
Right, right. All that money does get donated back to the town. I think that's why you've typically waived it in the past.
I mean, if this really is for an administrative fee, does it make sense to kind of do what Tony said? Sorry, Madam Chair, may I talk?
Go right ahead.
Apologize. Does it make sense just to say $25 flat fee, period? Like, something low that's not going to cripple anybody that runs an event like these? Just throwing it out there.
I would be fine with that. I would feel like that wouldn't hurt anyone, really.
We, and what would we be sacrificing? 75 bucks from some of the bigger events?
Right. All right, well, let's see. Tony, that was your proposal in the beginning. What's the number that makes sense if it is what it is and everyone pays it?
Yeah, I mean, whatever, whatever you guys want to come up with. I just don't want to talk about it again.
Exactly.
So, you know, it's not like, so if you want to say, "Large events pay 100, and small events pay 25," then that's it. And it's just, you know, that's, that's what it is. So we don't...
Yeah, you could say, "Large events involving people over, with over 100 people attending" would be a large event, and anything under that would be a small event.
Yeah, I think the language that Lorraine has suggested, and then just add anything that doesn't meet that definition is $25. I see nodding hands.
So events that are community-based and not-for-profit should be considered no-charge.
Well, shall be.
Those are, those are combined, right? Not community events or not-for-profit. It's a not-for-profit community event.
Right.
Correct.
A large-scale event, nonprofit fundraisers.
Right, and if we were going to do what we just suggested, we do events that are community-based and not-for-profit, we'll be charged $25. Large scales would be 100. That's how that would be reflected.
So do we say large-scale events with 100 or more attendees? Like, do you want to define it? Because we're going to be asked, so we may as well hammer it out now. What's that number?
Lorraine, I'd like you to opine on that, having been on the front lines of this for a long time. Is there a population number that makes sense?
Well, you know, that's a tough question because you have, it depends what, you know, what you would, we could go through some of these and talk through the scenario. What would the Knights of Columbus pay? Certainly, there's more than 100 people.
Well, they'd pay 100.
Yep.
Okay, and there's more than 100 people at the St. Patrick's Day Parade?
They'd pay 100.
And there's more than 100 people for the Easter egg hunt?
That's a community-based nonprofit.
So does that mean you charge them $25?
No, nothing.
Well, then you have three things.
Right.
Then you have no-charge things, 25 and 100.
Right.
I mean...
I...
It makes, I don't know, from doing this, it seems like, let's take a couple things off the not-charge list and say, "Okay, these people have to start paying." You know, Fall for Situate, the little thing in North Situate, the Horribles Parade, the Small Thing, and, you know, I don't personally think those people should pay, but Halloween in the Harbor shouldn't pay, Christmas in the Village, Winter Festival, Holidays in the Harbor shouldn't pay.
Yeah, to Andrew's point too. It's like, you know, we don't want to discourage community-based activities like this, so...
Yeah, I mean, I sort of questioned Farmer and Garden Day at the Mam Farmhouse. Should they pay?
How about any event that takes in money, right? I mean, every marathon, they're taking in money, right? So there's some sort of a liability where the KFC Carnival takes in money. So, I mean, anytime that there's money being exchanged versus like the Horribles, where it's just people standing around, or again, go back to the, you know, some vigil somewhere where there's no money being exchanged. Could that be a way for delineation? Is there, you know, a huge event where money's not being exchanged?
Yeah, so let's talk about the ones that have money exchanged that are on we haven't charged list. Firefighters' Road Race pays a fee to get in. Farmer's Market, you're buying the things there and they charge for the booths. It's not an easy thing.
Yeah, I, guys, I mean, this is exactly where we wanted to have this conversation because we get so into rabbit holes every time we have a meeting. I'm...
I say 25, keep it low and call it a day.
Have everyone pay the same?
Yeah, really, what's $25? It's really not that much, right?
Right, I mean, the point is to cover, yeah, the point is to cover administrative costs.
$25 doesn't even cover the cost.
But if you make everyone that's on that list who doesn't pay now pay $25, it makes up for the money for those you charge. I think the math's pretty close. Guys, what do you think? Or just charge, as the seat has to motion, just charge for the big-scale events?
Charge the big-scale events $100 and everybody else $25 unless it's a town-run event.
Would you like to try to make a motion, Mr. Vignani?
What's the definition of a town-run event?
It's run by a town...
Department.
Committee, board.
Like Ship Shape, Easter Egg, because that's recreation, things like that, right, Tony? Is that what you mean?
Council on Aging.
So Horribles Parade is run by the residents of Hammer Rock.
$25.
Town-run event.
A community-based event.
Right, or just get rid of it altogether.
We haven't talked about that option.
Yeah, I mean, this doesn't need to be this complicated.
All right, do you guys want to chew on this and when we revisit it at the end of our meeting and just make a decision? Nope, Karen's going, "No, just make a decision."
Let's just make a decision.
All right, let's, I'll make a motion that we charge an application fee of $100 for any event that has over 100 participants or has some sort of revenue component. And I make a motion that we charge $25 for any other-sized event and that there's no fee for any community-based events run by a town, department, or committee.
Second.
I'll second.
All right, my motion by Mr. Vignani is seconded by both, I'll say, Ms. Conley. She was slightly ahead. Is there any more discussion on this topic? All right, and then we will have a roll call, a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Okay, and we must now all solemnly swear that we will never have this conversation again when it comes up.
May I?
Conley, yes?
Yes, I would like to suggest that we somehow say, and the Board of Selectmen will not consider waivers, because we're just going to get back into this again. No waivers.
So we have an amended, amended motion? Is there a second amended motion? No, no second?
I don't think...
We just won't, we just won't let them go. We just won't put them forward. We'll say, "No, we don't do waivers."
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think you put that on the, on the form.
Right, I think that's a good idea.
Yep.
I guess that was my point. I wasn't really making a motion. I was just trying to say, can we make it so that people understand this is the fee based on our rules, and that's it?
Works for me. Put it right on the form. Okay. All right. Can we move on our agenda? Everyone comfortable? All right, so the meat of our meeting is to discuss our Advisory Committee on Equity and Justice for All. We received 16 exceptional applications for this committee. We won't be able to seat all of them, so we will have to go through that. But before we do that conversation, I wanted to tee up a couple of things. First, we have our HR Director, Bob Clark, who just popped up on our screen. And we also have Lieutenant Amanda O'Shea, who is from the Situate Police Department. And as you all know, the charge has slots for both of those people. So I invited them both to come and just introduce themselves to the public. I actually thought there'd be more people there tonight. So I, before we get into the nitty-gritty of this deliberation, I just wanted to, I'll go to, since Bob's on the screen already, I'll give Amanda a head, well, let me just, can we, can we let Amanda in at the same time? Because I know she's, she's got some, she's juggling some family things. I don't know if she's listening or on... Seth, can we? Yeah, there we go.
Sorry, no, she should be good, I apologize. Yep.
Okay. So her, she's not on our screen right now. Amanda, if you're listening, just hop on when you're ready. So we will start with Mr. Clark. And I just wanted to introduce everyone. I think everybody on the board knows Bob. He's been HR for a year and a half, two years?
Two and a half, yeah.
Two and a half already? Oh, my gosh. Time does fly and has done such an exceptional job sort of whipping, whipping HR into shape. So when we did this charge, we thought it would be important to have his perspective. So I just wanted to, if you wanted to just let the board know your perspective on participating in this board, and then we'll see if we can find Amanda.
No, I mean, I think the work's incredibly important. I think also, you don't want to have a situation in which anyone feels that that you're oppressed or have any adverse action taken against you because of their race. So I think it's incumbent upon all of us to make sure that we have practices and policies and place that do as much as we can to prohibit or minimize the instances in which something like this may occur. So, so I think the work's incredibly important. I absolutely welcome, I welcome it.
Great. And if you would just let the board know, I know that you've already been working in this space and that the public may not be aware of the, of the work. Do you want to just give a couple of highlights of where you think there's been some, already been progress made on our policies and procedures?
Right, right. So, you know, I, the town, I've been given a mandate by the town administrator to really sort of come up with more comprehensive personnel policies for the town. I mean, so I've been, for two and a half years, I've been the Human Resources Director, and the previous director was only there for about a year. So there hasn't been an HR department with the Town of Situate for a long time. So, so there's still a fair amount of work that has to happen in terms of pulling together policies and personnel handbook and things like that. But, but we're working actively on that. So the timing is actually, is ideal as well because as we develop anti-discrimination policies, it's an opportunity to kind of, to get perspectives from the residents of the town and others as we create those documents. So we began doing some anti-discrimination training. Unfortunately, that was right at the time that COVID hit. So the person who's doing that for us actually, you know, she stopped doing any types of trainings. And so we're looking at to get that back up to speed. Obviously, COVID presents a lot of limitations to us in terms of what we can do for training, but that's something that we really want to sort of get, get that to doing. We've taken some other measures. For instance, I talked to the town administrator about doing things like blind screening when we do recruitment for any of our open positions. Where I'm typically the recipient of any applicants, but applications or resumes for position, open positions with the town. So our practice will be that we'll actually remove any identifying information like names and even addresses, anything that may given in the... and even addresses, anything that may give an indication of, of the person, you know, gender, ethnicity, race, anything like that, so that, that managers are really looking at applicants based solely on their credentials and not any other factors. So it, it just helps, I think, to kind of, to minimize the impact of that sort of unconscious bias that we all may have. So, so, you know, there's certainly a number of things that we already, what we're doing, but, but I think it's, it's something that we need constantly be kind of considering and looking at what else we can, we can consider.
That's great. Does the board have any questions they want to ask Bob while we have him here?
Bob, since I so boldly recommended you to be on this committee.
Thank you, Mara.
I want to ask, are you okay with the time commitment, the extra time commitment? If it's an additional night for you to spend an hour or so with this group?
Sure, that's no problem.
Okay, I just wanted, because I, I probably should have asked you first, but I thought it was really important to have, to have you here, especially since we're looking at policies and trainings and things. So thank you for being so agreeable.
No problem, no.
Great. Anyone else have something for Bob? What we will, when we, after we have a chance to talk to Lieutenant O'Shea, we were going to talk about the role of whether this is a voting or non-voting. Did you want to participate in that conversation or will you leave it up to us, Bob?
Yeah, I'll, I'll stay around for the conversation.
Okay.
What's your thought on it, Bob?
I mean, I'm thinking, I mean, my sense would be a non-voting role. Ultimately, I, I feel like, you know, whatever the, the, the committee's going to come up with ultimately will sort of, you know, be a presentation to, to the, to the board and then, then a discussion with, with the town administrator and myself. And I think that not having a voting role, I think it allows me a little bit more objectivity when it comes to kind of evaluating what that ultimate recommendation would be.
I agree. Perfect. All right, I, I have got a text from Lieutenant O'Shea. She is, she's with us. She's can't, I think she's having trouble with her video. Oops. Sorry, Seth, I'll leave it alone. You do it.
No, 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 no. She, she should be absolutely fine. She's a co-host. I will.
Okay.
Try this again.
All right, Amanda, can you hear us?
Just needs to unmute.
Hi.
There you are.
Hi, hi, everyone. Good evening.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, sorry that we can't see you, but I will. Amanda has been on our police force for 17 years. She lives in Situate, just two kids in the school district. And we left, we had put a position on this charge for a representative from the Situate Police Department. And Chief went back to his team and Lieutenant O'Shea raised her hand to participate. So I, if, I, I don't know if you heard what I asked Bob, but if you just, you know, quickly introduce yourself to the world and why this is, is something that you think would be beneficial to the community, that would be great.
Sure, thank you for having me this evening. I think that this charge itself is so important. And so when Chief Thompson had brought it back to us, I immediately raised my hand. I, I think that this is important work and I think that it's community-based work and it has to be everyone working together. So I'm excited to step into this new role and to, and to work alongside of, of everyone during this process.
The same question, I guess, that Mara just asked. Are you okay with the potential time commitment in addition to your regular responsibilities?
I am. I know Chief Thompson had been approached by a couple of different committees. So we're doing our best to, to make sure that, you know, we're a part of each. And so I am completely comfortable with the commitment.
Okay, great. Does the board want to ask Lieutenant O'Shea any other questions or comments? Do you have, do you have any input on whether you think the role of a Situate Police representative should be a voting, non-voting advisor? How, do you have an opinion on that?
I do. I would mirror Bob's sentiment. I think that non-voting is, is probably where I would feel most comfortable at this point.
Okay. All right. Any other? Great. We really appreciate you both making the time to, to do this. Obviously, you're representing your, your niche in this, in this conversation. So really excited that you are participating and, and that everyone can get a chance to meet you. So we, is in, if no one has any other comments on this, I will move on. I do want to note that our intrepid town administrator has joined us. We won't ask him to do his report because I think we should jump right into, stay on our agenda, unless somebody else disagrees. So the first, so here we've, we've had these two spots where, all right, I'm sorry. I've got so much paper on this because as you all know, there's a lot of moving parts here. So I will remind everyone that our charge is 11 people. We have 11 members to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen, one of whom shall be representative of Black Lives Matter organization. And I will note that that organization did not put a, a representative forward. So that means that is an open spot for an at-large. The second is someone who shall represent the Situate Interfaith Clergy. We did have Reverend Stewart be put forth by that group. So we do have a candidate for that. We have our Human Resources, which we've just discussed. So we need to discuss if we're going to change that to a non-voting, what that looks like. We have a member of Situate Town Staff. And I just want to quickly just touch on that. We put this out there, but I will, I will let the board know that we didn't put out a town-wide invitation to all employees to consider this position. So I wanted to know whether you thought there was enough notice out there for someone who was interested to apply or whether we should just hold that spot and be a little more proactive about seeking a member of staff? With the caveat that we just heard two staff say they'd liked being in a liaison position. Does anyone have a feeling about whether we should, we've done enough to recruit somebody in that particular role? Any opinions on that? Mr. Vignani?
Well, I, I would guess no if we're assuming that we've reached out to people and not actually done it. So we should probably, it's part of the charter, probably give them a chance if they'd like to. So maybe we can send an email out and give people by beginning of next week to respond if they're interested.
Okay. I, I don't disagree. Does anyone have an objection to us? Ms. Connolly?
No, I have no objection, but I, I guess there is no prohibition against town employees being on any other committees in town. Is that right?
I, I, no, if you look at, I don't think so. Town, if you look at traffic rules and ranks, we have employees.
Public Advisory has employees.
It does?
There's no, there's no blanket prohibition. So a town employee probably couldn't sit on the advisory board because they'd be voting on their budget or on their salary. But aside from that, there's no, there's no prohibition about being on a town board or committee.
Okay. Thank you, man from the sky.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we will, we will hold that position. So now we're looking at 10 positions tonight, one of which is a candidate for Interfaith, Public Safety and the Police, Public Safety and HR. How do you guys feel about those being an ex officio or liaison position? Do you think that that's appropriate? Do you think?
Yes, I do. They should, they don't want to be non, they don't want to be non-voting. I think it's appropriate for them to be advisory roles instead of voting.
Okay, so if we put them as, as.
But Mrs. Chairman Canfield?
Yep.
I agree with that, but I don't think that that necessarily expands the number of people to add, just because they're still remaining, but they'll be non-voting. Because then I think you're going to start getting into a very large committee.
Right, that was going to be my next question is, so we, right now, we say up to 11 people. If we make that change, then it will include ex officio. Is that the right, I think that's the right expression.
Actually, Madam Chair, I don't think it is. Because I think ex officio, if, if, for example.
Officer.
If I was on a board, when I was the Parents Association President at our school, I was an ex officio member of the Board of Trustees, but I had a vote. So.
Okay.
I think it's just best to call them liaison or non-voting members.
All right.
Ex officios have a vote.
Okay, thank you.
That's right, that's what I'm saying. If you say ex officio, they have a vote.
All right, thank you. My little grammar geek heart is sad now. So, okay, so to Ms. Curran's point, if those two roles were comfortable, you know, going forward liaison, we would then have, and then, does anyone else feel that that should impact or not impact the total number? Or do you want to just go through the whole thing first?
Can you just remind me what the total committee would be without those? Or?
Okay, so.
It's 11 total, right?
11 total. We have five at-large in, in the original charge. We add the, the Black Lives Matters slot because no one set forward for that. So that's six. We have not discussed, and then that would be, wait, how does that work? So then we'd have an Interfaith, seven. Human Resources and Public Safety as eight and nine. A board rep. And then a town staff are holding up open. So right now, that's seven. Ms. Curran has graciously agreed to be our representative, representative unless somebody would like to put their case forward. Nope, they all jumped back, Mara. Oh, you're, you're muted. And then it's the same.
If somebody wants to jump in, then they won't be offended. But I think also, my position obviously is non-voting too, right? So I'm, I'm there more as, to help guide through the process and, and whatnot.
That's not what our charge says, so that if, I, I would put it to the board. I, I think you're right. I think if, if we're going to go liaison with the others, I think that that would make sense. Does anyone have an objection to that position being liaison and non-voting?
I guess it depends whether there's an odd or an even number of voting people.
Right. Oh, that's, that's true. Six, and then, you know, we have a town employee to be determined. Yeah, you're right. So I, I would, the thing that I, I, when thinking about this that I hadn't considered before is this is an advisory board to the Board of Selectmen, right? So it would make, doesn't make a lot of sense that a board member would have a voting. I don't know. I just started kind of going in a circle on that one.
Yeah, when we talked about member, we didn't really deliberate on voting, non-voting. So I, I have no problem if we change that to liaison.
Ms. Connolly?
I, I'm having an issue, to go back to the town person. The town person who raises their hand, are they representing the town? Because it's pretty clear to me that the Police Department liaison is representing the Police Department. The Human Resources person, I think, is representing the town in terms of its employment practices, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know who this town employee is going to be. Are they representing themselves? Are they representing the town? I think that's the, I, I just don't think, I think if we've got the Board of Selectmen liaison, if we've got a Police Department liaison and we've got a, the Human Resources Director as a liaison, I think that's enough representation by the town. And I only think that it's just a matter of, we, we just have to be sure, as Tony points out, that we pick a number of voting members that's an odd number. And anything else we add is non-voting, so it doesn't matter.
Okay. Mara, do you want to just touch on what the thought was about inviting someone from a, just sort of at-large staff person?
Well, just, my thought was, you know, there are employees, right? So if we're sitting here talking about policies, procedures, training, it would be nice to have some input from them as to things that they see that may be missing or, you know, their perspective. I guess, I think the word represent, Karen, you're right, K2, is may, maybe that's the wrong term that we put in there, because they may not necessarily have to represent all employees. And I wouldn't want to put that burden on one person, but certainly to have their perspective, I think is important. And I'll let others, you know, what does everybody else think about that?
Gentlemen, Mr. Goodrich?
Yeah, I mean, to me, I guess it was kind of the, the perspective, whereas some other folks might be in management positions, I guess, part, I guess my hope would be to get someone on the ground who maybe is seeing something maybe a little bit different, differently. So that perspective might be just a, from a, just a different angle as we're trying to find everything, the good, the bad, the ugly. Maybe those folks might be seeing something a little bit different. That was the way I saw it and maybe I was wrong in how I saw it, but that's how I understood it, at least.
I, I think I agree with it. What if we were to, if we change the language, there's a one member from, or I don't know, just take out of whom shall represent and just say one, one member, one town of Situate staff member? Because I do, I do think that that was the intent was to, you know, we're going to be looking at stuff that impacts folks that work for the town. And who knows better how that works than the folks that work in the town? So I would suggest that change and keep that position in. And then maybe, maybe that's why nobody raised their hand yet, because we weren't really, didn't find it enough so that people understood what that role would be?
Yeah.
And I think if you make it a liaison position, if, if a question pops up that deals with the department they're not in, then they could go talk to the Water Department and find out whatever the issue is and, and come back.
That's a really good point. Yeah. Okay, so if we assume that.
Bob for that, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think anybody that's, yeah, and of course, Mara for that matter, too. So we're at six, one, two. Would that be a voting member, that person?
I would say no.
Saying no. I think to be consistent, I don't know. Anyone feel differently? Should it not be voting? No one? All right.
You can go either way.
Well, they're not representing, that's the difference. Yeah, Karen?
Go either way on that, only because just thinking about the time commitment and a staff member, if they're going to put the time in, they may want their opinion to count, right?
Right, and they're not representing the town, per se.
Right. They're just representing their experience, really. I don't know, that's just.
I, I think it should, I, I'm inclined because they are exactly that. We're asking them to use their expertise in the, on this, that we should have a voting member. We have one no, one yes. Anyone feel, anyone else have a want to impine on that? Andrew, Mr. Goodrich?
I guess I lean towards letting them, letting that person vote just for that reason. You convinced me.
Well, and the other beautiful thing about that is adding that person means that we then have seven voting members.
But we could add another member.
We could add a, exactly.
I guess I would, I don't know what everyone else said, but I would say add another member and make this person non-voting like the other town people would be my, I would lean towards that.
Ms. Karen, K2?
Well, I, I know I keep harping on this. However, I feel as though to have the police and have the Human Resources However, I feel as though to have the police and have the Human Resources Director as non-voting members and then asking whoever raises their hand from the ranks of the town employees to be on the committee and to be a voting member is to put them in potentially difficult situation.
All right. I think Mr. Vignani and Ms. Conley. All right, we're split on this, so we need to make a decision so we can know, decide whether or not we need a different, another person or not.
It can't be split on it. There's five of us.
So then that's two... So now it's, so it's a voting member, a voting position, then? Is that... Mara, that was where you came out, right?
For them to be voting? I can go either way. I really can. I don't...
Now, now we're split.
Now we're split.
May I ask a question?
Yes, you may. Please do.
If we set this in stone tonight, and we realize this was a big mistake to not have someone vote or vote, could we ever revisit this in the future? Or no? This is, tonight's the night. So I would just say then have them not vote, and if we realize that's a huge mistake because they had some, no one ever steps forward.
I don't think it's set in stone, but the difference is we really need to... I really want to go... We have so many good candidates. I don't want to not add a spot if we go with their non-voting. Or either way, I mean, we have to, if we do odd, wait, now I'm all confused. If they are...
We can always come back. So, you know, what does the board think about this? Let's put it back out there to find if anybody in town is even interested, right? Because we agree that we didn't do our due diligence to inform them of this. Give them a week or so to come forward. When they come forward, ask them, just as we gave Bob Clark and Mandy O'Shea the opportunity to say, would you be comfortable being voting or non-voting? And at that point, you know, we determine, hey, if we have an extra spot, then we go to the waiting list, whatever, you know? Whatever doesn't happen tonight, those other folks that still came forward. We're always going back to committees when positions open up after the original appointment. So I would recommend that.
I think, once again, Ms. Curran has suggested an elegant solution. I see a lot of heads nodding. So I think to conclude, then we are going to leave it at 11... Sorry. We'll leave it at 11 members. We will... So I'm going to, I'm going to say this as a motion and see if I get it right. I will suggest that the board consider moving to change the charter for the Advisory Committee on Equity and Justice to, to change, to revise the Human Resource Selectmen and Public Safety Officers as liaison positions. That we revise the language for the town staff position to say one situat town staff And I think that's all, that's where we came out. Does some, would someone like to make that motion? As in, so moved? So moved. Mr. Goodrich has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Conley, second then?
Can I ask a quick question before we vote? How many... So does that leave six people that we appoint tonight? Okay. I guess my only thought is that, as I think we all did, there's more than six good people we're going to be putting on the committee.
Right. Which is exactly why I wanted to have this conversation before we went to the pool, as it were.
No, but actually, we would be appointing seven. So you've got Position One, if you will. You have the Interfaith.
Oh, yeah.
And then you have five members at large. So that's seven.
Seven. That's seven total.
What's Position One?
Black Lives Matter and...
The one that says Representative of Situat Black Lives Matter.
So then we're going to have eight voting members when the town, if the town person picks that?
One, two.
If they pick that, yeah. One, two.
Five, six, seven. No, seven. Oh, if they do, yeah, then we'd have eight. Yes.
I'm sorry. I'm unclear what's happening with that. I'm just, for the minutes. What's happening with the Black Lives?
We'll recap in a minute. We're reconsidering.
Okay. I thought you were removing that first position and making it six at-large members. That's what you said earlier. That's why I'm just a little...
Well, we just said we didn't have an applicant for that. I don't think we changed that because it was a may include the following. I mean, unless the board wants to actually remove it, that's fine, too. But practicality, we've already got the applicants, and there wasn't one. So it just defaults to an at-large. Okay, so let's, we have a math problem. And yes, Mr. Goodrich?
Then I will go back to saying town staff should not have a vote. And then we'll have the seven. Right?
There's our swing vote just swung on us.
The flip-flopper.
Yeah. Even though I think, I don't know, it's probably Ms. Curran's. We gave it to the others. Yes, Ms. Conley?
So do we have, is it possible that we have 11 minus four? Because if it's...
Yes.
Minus the police, minus the HR, minus the town employee. And what was the other one?
Selectmen.
Selectmen. So that reduces it to seven.
Correct.
So we can appoint seven tonight, which includes the Interfaith.
Correct.
And then if we don't get someone from the town, if we've decided it's a non-voting member anyway, it won't affect the voting. We can add as many liaisons as we want, I suppose, if they're non-voting.
Okay, so then, so the other part of the equation is we have an extraordinary group of candidates.
Right.
Does the board want to consider increasing the total number on this committee, knowing that we all were concerned that it not get unwieldy with too many people? Does changing these guys to liaisons change your opinion on that subject? No? Anybody that wants to increase the number? Okay. If no one feels... Tony, did you want to say something?
Just make sure I have the number right. If we can appoint seven of all the people we interviewed, and then the four non-voting people, like Karen Conley just said, I'm good with that.
Then why don't we do this? And why don't we make the staff non-voting? Because we're just going to be going in circles for...
Right, right, right. All righty. Non-voting, and then that's aligned with the rest of the...
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to change the one member from situat town staff to a non-voting position.
Okay, as amended, we have a motion. We have an amendment. Is there a second for the amendment?
Yes, second.
Mr. Vignani, is any more discussion on the matter? We have a motion. I guess we have to vote on the amendment first. I'm doing Robert's rolls.
Yeah. Go to amend.
We, a roll call vote on the amendment to make the town staff a liaison position.
I think there's two votes.
Yeah, there's two votes. Are you with us, Lorraine? She's muted. All right. Well, then, I don't know what's going on. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield says yes. Five, one, to accept the amendment to make it a non-voting.
Five, one, I'm sorry.
Zero. Sorry, I didn't say five, one. Oh, it's not even late.
Math challenged.
Okay, so now we're back to the original motion.
I'm sorry. Can I just clarify? Because we didn't, we didn't have a vote in a roll call vote for the original.
No, we amended it, so now we...
So what I have is Ms. Conley made a motion to revise the Human Resources Selectmen, Public Safety Employee, and Town Staff as a non-voting member, second by Mr. Goodrich. Unanimous vote.
And Public Safety. There's all four.
Yeah, I said Public Safety.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we're all set, right?
Yeah, let's appoint seven people, and then go eat dinner.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, so thank you, Ms. Curran and Johnny, for that cattle prod. Okay. So I had, I wrote notes, because this is a confusing thing to do, right? So now we have a total number. We have seven positions available. As noted, there was one applicant put forward for the Situat Interfaith Clergy, which was Reverend Natasha Stewart. If, would...
I make a motion?
Would you please make a motion?
Is there special words I'm supposed to... Hold on.
Say... I'm sure there are magic words. Hold on.
Here's an executive action with the motion.
Yep. Thank you. It's, let's see. Oh, here it is.
I have to read all that? Okay. So, Lorraine, do I have to read that whole thing with every motion? Or...
Well, you can either do them as one big appointment or do them individually, whatever is your pleasure.
I say we do it all as one motion. How about, is the sense of the board to nominate Natasha Stewart to the Interfaith position?
Yeah. Well, I think really, it's only the blue part you have to read. Move to appoint to the Advisory Committee for two years until a successor, like the normal language. You don't need to read all the stuff below.
Okay.
So would you like to do that now, or would you like to say below that?
I think I can do that.
You think you can do that? So proud.
All right. Move to appoint Natasha Stewart to the Advisory Committee for Equity and Justice for All for a term of two years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within 90 days.
Moved by Mr. Vignani. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Curran. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote on this candidate.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Okay. That motion moves, is moved unanimously. And thank you to Reverend Stewart for being the first appointed person on this committee. That leaves us with six at-large. We have 16 candidates, and one's better than the next. I know that the board has, we've all independently been poring over our notes and the applications and reviewing the interviews. And I thought a really long time about how to do this efficiently. The board obviously has articulated that it's important to have a range of voices heard, and we certainly have a great group to go from. So I think what's going to be hard is the whittling down. So I would propose to the board, and see if you will accept this as a mode of efficiency, is to ask each of us... So we have six, six spots to fill now. I would ask each of you to pick eight, and obviously, we can talk about the number, your eight people that you would like to consider. I know on my list, I have even more than eight, but I suspect that if we go through that exercise, that there will be some people that all of us agree would be, you know, really should be included. And that will help inform our decision-making. Does that sound like an efficient and appropriate way to go forward, in the board's opinion? I'll open it up to you.
Yes.
Tony likes that. Andrew's nodding. Mara's contemplating. All right. Okay. So I have a spreadsheet so that I can just put check marks and try to keep tabs on where we are, and then we can do sort of a little straw poll on this. So what did I say? One, two, three?
How many do you want us to list of eight?
So I said eight, but what, does anyone... I mean, I just pulled that number out. We've got six open spots. I don't think we'll agree on six, 100% on six, because there's so many good people. Do you think we should maybe do more? What do you guys think? What sounds like a good number? No one?
Let's try...
Maybe you could do your top six and then go from there.
Well, I think we need more than the open spots, because I think that we're going to find that, A, it's hard, and I think there's value in having a conversation of if we have, you know, four people that all, five of us like, and they all have the same skill set, that may not make the best committee. So before we actually get into that, I'd like to, I think it should be more than the number seats. So we could start with eight. And now I got to figure out who on this. I would, I would start with Ms. Curran as our liaison, if you're prepared.
Thank you.
Oh, and they like, yeah, no, it doesn't matter. I've got it organized alphabetically here, so I can find the, find the right spot.
Yeah, I'm fine. I mean, I've pored over everybody's resumes. And first, I just want to say, like you said, Karen, not an easy decision. There are a lot, a lot of folks that came forward that are fabulous backgrounds. But again, it's getting that right mix that I'm trying to get to, in my opinion, because obviously, everybody has different, different eight. So eight people that I've identified, and it's not necessarily in any order, but Nikki Sanders, Ruth Yacine. You're going to, are you making checks, Karen?
I am. I'm just, oh, stop doing that. Yelling at me. Okay.
Angela Dre.
Okay. Yep.
When you're ready.
Yep, go ahead.
Tom Secor. Kate Swoop.
Okay.
Kim Harriman.
Yep.
We said eight, right?
Yep. One, two, three, four, five, six. Two more.
George Taylor. Then Celia Rika, I believe it is.
Celia, okay. All righty. Mr. Vignani, are you prepared with your eight? This is, this is like, this is so hard.
Yes, I will. I'll do my best. So Angela Dre, Nikki Sanders, Celia Rika, Kim Kelly Harriman, Stephanie Burke, Ruth Yacine, Nicole, is it Aduchie?
Yep.
And Tom Secor.
Okay. Ms. Conley, are you ready?
I am. Nikki Sanders Mead, Celia Richa.
Wait, wait.
Slow down a little bit.
Yeah, I got to find the right block. Okay, yep. Yep. So I'll start again.
Yep.
And I'll go slow. Nikki Sanders Mead, Celia Richa.
Yep.
Kim Kelly Harriman.
Yep.
Ruth Yacine.
Yep.
Angela Day.
Angela...
Dre.
Dre, yep, okay.
Dre. Oh, I wrote down Dre, Day, never mind. George Taylor.
Yep.
And where am I on that?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Tom Secor. And did I say Kate Swoop?
You did not.
No.
Okay. That's it. That's the eight.
Okay. Andrew, are you prepared? Sir?
I'm prepared.
All right.
All right. Nikki Sanders Mead.
Okay.
Yep. Kim Kelly Harriman.
Yep.
Ruth Yacine. George Taylor. Angela Dre.
Yep.
Richard Taft.
Hold on. Okay, yep.
And Tom Secor.
Okay. All right, so now I have to do eight. Two, three, four, five. Six. Oh, my goodness. All right, so, all right, let's see if I can do this. And this is two-handed here. Okay, so.
I have everything, Karen, so you can just do your pick.
Okay, so Angela Dre, Stephanie Burke, Ruth Yassine, Thomas Secor, Kim Kelly Harriman, Nikki Sanders Mead, Kate Swoop. Where are we? Okay, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And impossible because so many good people. I will say George Taylor as well. All right, that's eight each. So we have one, two, three, four, five people that we all said we think should serve on this. They include Kim Kelly Harriman, Angela Ribero Dre, Nikki Sanders Mead, Thomas Secor, Secor, sorry, Thomas, and Maggie, I'm sorry, Ruth Yassine.
Ruth.
Sorry, Ruth Yassine. So that's one, two, three, four, five.
And then you have one more that has four of the five.
Right, and then four of us also selected George Taylor. I would submit that we should spend a little time looking at the composite, although I think we all kind of did. Does the board feel like we need to, are we comfortable with this composition? Or do we need to say, you know, gosh? You know? I don't know, we're pretty, I think it's pretty mixed.
This is one, two, three, four, five, six. So that's how many we're appointing, right?
We have six open slots. We have five fives and one four.
Yeah, I mean, I think it looks like a great mix.
I do too. I'm just looking through what the strengths are. We have policy, we have human rights experience, we have systemic racism, we have a mix of perspectives in the group. We have none, at least half are longtime residents, which I think if we're looking at, you know, understanding our community, that's a plus. Do we, I mean, this, I can't believe, is it this easy? Can we, are we ready to make a decision or?
Well, I.
I think you are.
Point out too, oh.
That's all right, that's correct.
Sorry. You know, there are some folks that came forward that had some really great experience and it doesn't mean that they can't be a part of the process. We don't want them to be a part of the process. It just means that these six folks are a part of this voting committee to really drive the direction. So we can always pull in folks that have different expertise on subcommittees or little task forces. And I just want to reiterate that because I think it's really important.
That's a really good point, Ms. Curran. I know when I was deliberating that I had exactly those thoughts. It's like, there's just, there's so many good people here and I would hope that this committee going forward would keep this list close by. And the same token, if you're not seated, does not mean, these are all public meetings and I will remind everyone that this is, the purpose of this is to look at policies and procedures of how we do town business. That's the purpose. It's, you know, digging in and doing that stuff. So, yeah, you know, everyone's welcome to any public meeting to have input.
We, so the six people are, we agreed, everybody agreed on five and then there was one person that got four and a bunch of people that got three?
We had, yeah, it was one, two, two people got threes, one, two, and then a couple of one-offs.
Okay, I agree with the five people that we all agreed upon. On the sixth one, I'd just like to take a minute and look at the makeup of that before we necessarily heard that. I don't even know, who is the one that four people got votes on?
George Taylor had four.
Okay.
So George is a longtime resident of the town.
And I know George. I think he'd be great on the committee. I guess my question is having people that have actually experienced it, people of color, people who are going to be able to give hands-on experiences that are going to help this committee. And again, I'm just trying to get my notes together here. And that's not to say that there aren't other forms of diversity that have to be dealt with. Everybody had their own little touch to it. But that's my one concern.
So we have, yeah, and that was something, I think it's worth having a talk out. So we have one. Let's see. It's hard because all these, there's so many people and so many notes.
I mean, we're not going to get a bad person.
No.
You know, from the 10 or so that we.
So we have two people. Let's see.
Two with three, right, and then one with four. Are those, is that where we're at?
We have one, two, three, one, two, three, four, five people with fives. Is that what you're asking me? Sorry.
Yeah, and then.
This is mixed. This is interesting. So.
Maybe we take the three, the two with three and the one with four and have everybody vote for one?
Oh, ranked choice. I love ranked choice. Hold on, so, okay. So we have, all right, so our fives are Kelly, Kim Kelly Harriman, Angela Ribero Dre, Nikki Sanders Mead, and Thomas Secor, and Ruth Yassine. Okay.
And.
Each of them have a very.
Natasha, Natasha.
And Natasha, right.
Yeah, but we already voted her, so that's okay. We don't have to.
Yeah, so she's.
So who are the people that got, four you said was George. Who were the two people that got three?
Okay, so the other, that's a very good suggestion, Mr. Vignani.
Kate Swoop and Celia Richa got three.
Thank you. Celia Richa, Kate Swoop, and then George is the four. Celia has lived here five years. She has a huge experience in human rights and she's worked at the State House. And she, her comment that I wrote down was she, you know, she's working, she'd like to work really hard to get more people of color to move to our community, which I really thought stood out. Then Kate Swoop. I don't have, I just have my notes. I don't have the resumes in front of it. She's worked in unintended bias and she's very data-based. She's been here three years. And then George, I think most of us know because he's lived here 35 years and has taught sports. And my comment was he had a, he came late in the interview process and had a perspective of he's seen the impact on kids directly as, you know, spending that much time with hundreds of kids in our town. I just, I thought that was an interesting perspective. Would anyone like to talk about Celia, Kate, and George and their feelings on them? Or do you want to try the ranking system again?
Well, like you said, they all bring.
Yeah.
Great experience to the table.
And I got to tell you, I honestly had all of them on my list and it was impossible, it was very difficult to say, you know. I don't, I think you said, I don't think we can go wrong. All right, do you want to, Mr. Vignani suggested we take those three and we each revote who we think our top person should be? Do you think that's a good idea to do that? Friends and family?
I do. I think there's a little bit of overlap between Tom Secor's skill set and George's skill set. You know, and maybe not. I mean, I think they'd both be good. And maybe they're both, I don't know, I'm just saying, now that we know that there's five that we all agree upon, maybe each one of us thinks the mix, or not. Or no, I don't think it's a bad decision to go with George either. So whatever you guys, if no one agrees, then.
Well, I'm, I like, no, I think you're right. I think that's what I kind of thought would happen is if we take a look at the consensus. I didn't, I honestly didn't think we'd have five consensus, so threw me kind of for a loop. But looking at that composition, I would like to revisit those top three. So that was a really good solution. And since I went last, I'm happy to go first this time. We'll try to reverse the order. Is that fair?
Sure.
Are we ready to do that? All right, now I have to see who it was. It's Celia, Kate, and George. I, it's my personal thing. So I will, I would like to vote for Celia. Andrew, I think you were second to last?
Yes, so we're just doing the top one?
So, yeah, just Celia, Kate, or George?
George Taylor.
Okay, Ms. Connolly?
Celia Richa.
And Mr. Vignani?
Celia as well.
And Ms. Curran?
Celia.
Oh, there you go. That's interesting. So that's four for Celia. In ranked choice voting in the world, this is how it works. Are we comfortable with those six? Or do we feel that there's additional ranked choicing that needs to happen?
I'm comfortable, Madam Chair.
Well, I guess my only question, I'm sorry.
You're scratching your chin.
Tony's point about the two different skill sets, I had the exact kind of same thing with Taylor and Secor. I don't know. Maybe I'm just, maybe I'm sensitive with younger kids. I just remember, I wrote that in my notes too, just how we had that perspective. But you're right, he can still participate. Okay, no, I mean, I just.
Well, there's also the possibility that a town employee doesn't want to participate.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And there's also the possibility that this has happened before. We inform these folks that we'd like to appoint them and they go, yeah, I just thought about it and I'm busy.
All right, I'm ready, yeah, not going to drag it on, sorry.
I don't suspect this group will do that, but. Okay, so we have right now Kim Kelly Harriman, Angela Ribero Dre, Nikki Sanders Mead, Thomas Secor, Ruth Yassine, sorry, Yassine, and Celia Richa as the six that we have circled around. Would someone like to make a motion? Oh, what was that?
What was that? We're about to get photobombed. Uh-oh.
My phone bust.
I would like to move the following applicants. Like to move Nikki Saunders, Ruth Yassine, Angela Dre, Tom Secors, Kim Kelly Harriman, and Celia, is it Rika or Richa? Anyway, I apologize if I pronounced that wrong, to Celia. To the Advisory Committee for Equity and Justice for All for a term of two years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within 30 days.
Motion by Ms. Curran. Is there a second? Second, second by Ms. Connolly. This requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
All right, well, congratulations to our applicants who have been placed on this board. And as everyone's pointed out, if you weren't, trust me, this was a very difficult decision because there were so many qualified people. So please stand by and be ready to help because I think there's going to be a lot of work that needs to be done. So with that.
Just reiterate, Karen, that everybody can go to the meetings.
Absolutely. They're all open. They will be posted as all open meetings. All meetings, the town advisory boards are posted on our website and are open to the public and we encourage participation.
And Madam Chair, what meeting will we take a look at the town staff position? Because I just want to set expectations as to setting a first name for everybody.
Yeah, so if we, so today's the 12th. If we post, if we send out an email, say by Monday, get that ready.
The December 1st meeting.
We have a meeting.
Well, one.
Yep, that's the next meeting following next week.
Yeah, okay.
Because of Thanksgiving.
That's all right. This thing will probably kick off in January then, which will be okay.
Yeah, with Thanksgiving, we give people, ask them to give them, I'm sorry, when is it? December 1st?
December 1st is our next meeting after next Tuesday.
That gives people only a week to review, really, if you figure out a vacation week. We want to have applications due on the. Otherwise, it's going to be up to the 15th. What do you guys think? Short window to apply to.
That's two weeks.
That's fine, Karen. People know this is going on. It's just we didn't technically send an invite.
All right, so we'll send the invite on the 23rd and, I mean, on the 16th and review and discuss on the 1st.
Who's going to send the invite?
We'll talk about that tomorrow.
Okay, that's fine.
That's why I said not do it tomorrow. I'll do it Monday. Gives us time to figure it out. Okay, anything else on this matter that needs to be reviewed? Okay.
Good job, Madam Chair.
I'm not sure exactly, but that was great. All right, so we, is Mr. Bedrow. The only thing we skipped on the agenda was a report from Jim. Jim, would you like to advise the board on any matters?
To be honest with you, I don't have a lot of update tonight. Nancy and I went into budget hearings at nine o'clock this morning and came up for air when the moderator's meeting finished around 3:30, 4 o'clock. Probably the big one for the board that I emailed you earlier is that Cushing Park is underway, the construction on Cushing Park off Neilgate. It was a bond of contention for the residents for a long time. It's actually owned by the state. They are out there today. They went out there and they pulverized the road and graded it. And depending on the weather, they'll pave it tomorrow or Tuesday of next week. At that point, we'll have to start doing some things to get it on for acceptance and take it as a town road. But what they are planning, we think will be a pretty good fix and will last for quite a while. And when we're out there today, just the, just the grading of the road was way better than what the road was before they graded it. So that's pretty good. On another note, I was just looking at our COVID numbers. Just since Tuesday, we've had 11 new cases. A lot of those are family members of previous cases, but our numbers are going up substantially as are the state. The good number for us, though, is we've had a very large number of tests. So we're still only 1.73% positive over the last 14 days. So even though the numbers are going up, our percentage is staying about the same because we are. Sorry, I'll stop my video. I don't have a whole lot of bandwidth. But because we are doing a lot of testing, those numbers as a percentage are staying pretty good. But it is frightening the way the numbers are starting to jump.
And all the kids are coming home next week, so, yeah, more.
Jim, are we seeing a rise in the senior facilities?
I haven't gotten it. I haven't gotten any from the senior facilities. I get a look at the addresses, I haven't seen any from any of our nursing home or senior facilities. I think we are seeing some increased numbers of school-aged children, but they seem to be close contacts of family members, so they wouldn't have been in the schools recently. But not senior numbers, the, the state numbers, the biggest groups have been under twenty and twenty to thirty.
Okay, Mr. Vignani?
Jim, two things. Did we ever send out an email to everybody about the new governor's regulations on the, a web blast from the town? That people have to wear masks outside and, and, you know, the ten o'clock curfew, that sort of stuff?
I don't know if we ever did a web blast, Tony, we announced it at our Monday morning and
Yeah.
elections meeting, whether we did a web blast or not, I can't remember to be honest with you.
Do you think we could post that on the website and/or do a blast just to let people know? I just, I just
Yeah, we also signed down, there's a sign down on Front Street reminding people to wear their mask, that the mask mandate's in place.
Okay.
We do that also. Do something, do something tomorrow.
The other thing is I'm wondering if we should inform people what the proper protocol is if you act, like, are you supposed to inform the town if you test positive? And is the town then supposed to make a phone call out and find out who they've been in touch with? Is that what the
The town gets notified if you test positive, and then the town begins the contact tracing with you.
They do, so, so the town is calling the people that are positive and doing that.
Yeah, I mean, if we, I think last week when we had that big Saturday, I think we also had the state contact tracing people assisting with that, but we get notified and then we begin the close contact
So Okay, so the, the town gets notified from the state of positive tests, and then, now, but that could take I guess that's when you know, right? So four or five days later, we then contact the citizen and say, you're positive, who have you been in touch with?
When we get it, they, they probably test either that day or the next day, we're in contact with them, depending on when we get the notification. So, it could be a rapid test, the person could have found out that day, it could be one of the longer tests, and they find out several days later. But if you're going to get tested because you have been a close contact, or you have been exposed to someone that you know of, then you should be quarantining in those intervening days. If you're notified as a close contact of someone who has tested positive for COVID, you are supposed to quarantine.
And then go get tested yourself, but you're still supposed to quarantine for fourteen days, even if you test negative
because of the incubation period for the disease.
Great, maybe we could
We could bring Drew back on if you want, on one of our Monday morning meetings.
I think maybe Facebook and email blast are going to touch more people than than our Monday morning meetings, unless, of course, more is doing it.
Very popular. But yeah, we can, we can do some sort of blast. Usually what we do is we send out a link to the state, the state page that has all the details.
Okay, great, thanks.
Jim, just one question on the Cushing, and then Ms. Connolly. They're going to take that tree out, right? I mean, we can't accept it with that tree.
They're not taking the tree down.
Wow.
We went out there today and we had some rather long conversations with them. If they'd given us some notice aside from telling us Monday that they were coming in on Thursday, we could have done something. What we're hoping right now is if it rains tomorrow, and we can get someone up there tomorrow, Monday, and take it down, otherwise we'll have to deal with it after they're done.
But, but we can't accept that road with that tree in the middle.
No, we'll have to get the tree down before we accept it, but as I said, as I said to the DPW, we looked at what they were planning, notwithstanding the tree. It's a good fix. My concern was, they're here, they're doing it, if I tell them to go away and deal with the tree, we're not
They'll never come back.
They'll never come back.
So, we're going to try, it's supposed to rain tomorrow, which is a good thing, and we'll put off the, the paving till Tuesday. I was out there with Kevin Capley today, we called our tree guys right away to come and look at it. As I said, I was in budget hearings all afternoon, so I didn't get a chance to touch back base with Kevin, but if we can't get it down before they're done, we'll have to deal with it after they're gone.
Okay, great. Ms. Connolly, I'm sorry I interrupted you, go ahead.
That's all right. Now, I, Jim, to go back to the issue of what do people do? You know, maybe some sort of, Drew could put some diagram together that, what if, what if? So what if I think I've been exposed, I go get a test? The test place calls me and says, you're positive. Then what do I as an individual do, other than go into quarantine? Am I supposed to call people? Am I supposed to call the health department? Does the health department get the notice from the pharmacy or the doctor? Do they then call, you know what I mean? I think it's
We get notified and we call you, and we help you establish who your close contacts are.
Okay, so you're doing the contact tracing, the town is.
The town, or if, as I said, last Tuesday or last Saturday, we had twelve new cases just on Saturday. The state contact tracing people assisted us.
Okay.
We just didn't have the staff to track twelve people.
Right, right. Okay, alright, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Bedrow?
It's very confusing, and Drew and I have been through this so many times. You know, your son or daughter is a close contact with somebody at school, what about their siblings? At that case, they are a close contact of a close contact, so there is no real step that you need to take until their test comes back, the close contacts test come back. We do recommend that if they have a sibling that they share a room with, or that that sibling quarantined for a couple of days until the test results come back. But it's, you know, it's like six degrees of Kevin Bacon sometimes. What happens, what happens, what happens? The best thing I can tell people is if you're not sure, call the health department. If you don't get Drew, we'll give you his, his cell phone number. Drew was fantastic while getting back to people and talking through your own particular scenario because they're all so different, it's, it's kind of hard to say, if this happens, do this.
Right.
So if you just, if you have a question, you're not sure, I know Mar and I talked when this whole thing started about a particular business opening up, he was able to talk to her and walk her through exactly what she needed to do. He's, he's fantastic like that. So, if, if you have a question, call us, call the health department, we'll get you in touch with Drew, our, the public health nurse, and they can talk you through your particular scenario.
Yeah, he was I appreciate it. I actually did that, and the nurse was extremely nice, so. Thank you.
They're doing a, you know, for people that never had any training in this and never had to deal with anything like this before, they're really doing a fantastic job and carrying a pretty big weight over there.
Yep. Jim, anything else from you at this point, sir?
I see Mr. Goodrich unmuted, so I don't know if he had something.
No, I was just going to sing the praises of Drew, he really, he's, he's amazing. So he's doing a fantastic job.
Never gets too high, never gets too low, pretty upbeat all the time. And just, you know, deals with what comes in front of him, and he's really, he's been a very calming influence during this whole thing. There are times I call and say, now what? He just says, you know, he backs me down and he really has been fantastic, and so has our public health nurse and the rest of the staff over there.
Alright, well, Jim, if you have nothing else, so just, we did have the moderators' meeting this afternoon, it was uneventful. Mr. Goodrich had joined as well, and just went through the protocol, and we're set for Monday, we're to be there, I think, Lorraine, at six fifteen, there's a photo op, I think we're supposed to participate, so.
Yes.
So, wear photo op-y clothes, and we will hopefully get through that meeting quickly.
Wear a photo op-y mask.
Yep, absolutely. And if that's it, then we will take a motion to adjourn, and Lorraine, does anyone need to come sign tomorrow, or are we doing that next week?
No, we don't have any signatures tomorrow. We do have your special town meeting books ready. Michelle got them all ready for you to pick up, though.
Okay.
So if you'd like to swing by and pick them up tomorrow, from Monday.
We're not meeting on the seventeenth, are we?
Yes, we have a slot meeting on the seventeenth.
Oh, we are? Both Monday and Tuesday?
Yeah, sorry about that.
It was either that or then you pushed into Thanksgiving week.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's okay, I just wanted to make sure, usually we used to cancel it, so I just wanted to make sure it wasn't wrong. Just before we leave, just huge shout out to Kathy and all the election workers. I know we haven't met since the election, and you know, everyone in town had such confidence in her and her staff, and all the poll workers that did come in. Thank you for being so diligent and so careful and taking every single vote into account so carefully, so I think we're very lucky, and just want to thank her and everybody else that made our election here, and situate uneventful.
And on top of that, hers was the easiest budget today because it went down significantly from this year to next year because of the lack of elections, so. It was the easiest budget I had to review today, it's down like forty thousand dollars. I'm like, okay, thanks, Kathy, I'll see you.
Take some days off, the poor thing.
Excellent. Thank you, Mar, for, for noting that. Alright, if that's all, we will entertain a motion to adjourn. Still moved? So I'm moving, Ms. Curran, second in, bye.
Second.
Mr. Vignani was in there first.
Okay.
What? Roll call.
Please.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you guys for coming out on a, on a, on a, on a school night to, to do this, it was important. Alright, we'll see you Monday.